Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome the great faces that I see in the audience tonight to the Wareham School Committee for Wednesday, February 12th at 7:00 PM. I'd like to start off the night with public participation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the committee? If so, please step up to the microphone and table right down to my right. Hello?
Hi.
Welcome. Can you state your name?
Loreanna Dillon, Vice President of Student Council. Teachers, principals, cafeteria workers, custodians, secretaries, nurses, and bus drivers make it possible for us to learn every day. They all put in 110 percent to provide an enjoyable, safe, and challenging learning environment. The Wareham Middle School Student Council takes all their hard work into consideration by putting together Thank You Week. As a group, we brainstorm creative themes to show our appreciation. Since Thank You Week is falling on the week of President's Day, we have decided to have a patriotic theme. For some teachers, we have made pencil cups and decorated them with red construction paper, white stripes, and foam stars. We put a patriotic pencil along with red, white, and blue mints and chocolate coins inside. There is a note with a picture of a monument that is signed by the fellow members of Student Council. For people like cafeteria workers, custodians, bus drivers, and some teachers who wouldn't need a pencil cup would be given a goodie bag. On each day, we would also have a presidential quote that would be announced on morning announcements. Our dedicated team is also responsible for surreptitiously putting each teacher's gift in their classroom. Each day of the week, we would thank a different category of the Wareham Middle School staff. For example, on Monday, we would give -- we would thank the cafeteria workers, so we would give their goodie bags to them then. We also decorated a banner for the staff lounge. Last year, we had a Chinese New Year theme with origami. It has been a tremendous success.
Thank you. Do you mind staying just for a second? Could you introduce yourself also?
I'm Kylie DeKes.
Hi. Nice to meet both of you. This is something that I know that I look forward to every single year. The amount of work and effort and thoughtfulness that you put into this is very much appreciated. And I know that all of the people that you go out of your way to thank, I'm sure feel the exact same way. So, I would like to take this opportunity to open it up to the committee, so then they can give you a huge thank you also for your effort and what you do. Kenny, do you want to start?
You said it all. Thank you again. It's outstanding, and I appreciate this. Is this my gift? Yeah? So, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I'm thrilled that you're here. I'm grateful that you so well represent the middle school, and I'm sure your principal behind you is thrilled to have you do it so well. And I am very curious about anybody who stands up there and so articulately says the word "surreptitiously." I wonder if you really enjoyed being surreptitious. I suspect you did. Thank you for being here.
Do you have anything?
So, you guys are doing a great job with that. I think it's great that you guys are showing appreciation to Wareham School staff because they definitely deserve it.
Thank you very much. Great job. If you -- the next time you make crafts, could I come over?
Watch out.
Thank you very much for coming here tonight. I didn't know this was an annual thing. I remember it from last year, and I was very happy to see this. And you guys are doing a great job. The middle school does a great job with this. And thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Would you allow me to wiggle the mouse?
Yes, that would be great. All right. Thanks again, you guys. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that would like to address the committee? If so, please come down and sit at the table. Welcome. Can you state your name?
The name is Ron Robinson, and thank you very much for allowing me to come up and make a slight presentation. I'm kind of concerned because I heard that the school committee is entertaining a proposal, so to speak, to, shall I say, not fund or to defund the resource person position. I have problems because when I went to school back in the '60s, '60s, '70s, education at that time is much different than it is now. The major concern and the major priority at that time was education. And it should be education, because that's what it is. We didn't really have a safety problem. We didn't really have a security problem. The students didn't have a problem about feeling secure. The priorities at this point has changed. I don't know if we realize it, but security, safety, a student being able to feel secure in an educational environment has made a drastic leap, so much so that it's now, as I see it, at the top of the list. So, when we consider the funds that we have and how we're going to allocate those funds, the common denominator that we use at this point should not be the same common denominator we used 30 years ago. We're living in a different world. It takes a different situation. It takes a different mindset to administer the, let's say, the funds that we have in a way that we can educate our children. If our children cannot feel safe and secure in their educational environment, then we don't need to educate. That's what we need to do first, so that when we talk about priorities, that can come at the end of the list. Because if they don't feel safe and secure in their environment, they can't learn, because they're worried about too other -- too many other things. There are other problems on their mind. So, when we make those considerations, let's just please consider the topsy-turbo situation that took place, in that safety and security should now be at the top of the list. So, we're talking about funding a resource person or a resource department or anything that has to do with helping our children feel safe and secure. Let's give it the real thought process that's needed. Let's really consider that. Let's not make it a total dollar and cents issues. And if I were to make a suggestion, since there seems to be a difference between what people feel, there's the school committee, the police department, whatever, why don't we come together on that? Why don't we merge and go halfway? I'm not asking that maybe the school committee should fund the whole position, or the police department fund the whole position. Maybe we can come together and split it up. But surely, surely, we have to consider our children feeling safe and secure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Robinson. Again, I want to thank Mr. Robinson for coming up this evening and expressing his points of view and his opinion and his absolute power for the children that we're educating here in Wareham. I feel that it's important just to clarify just a couple of points. First and foremost, I do agree that the security and the safety of the children in our school are -- is the most important. And the committee feels, and the superintendent, and the administration, and the teachers feel exactly the same way. The point of clarification is that it was not a school committee decision to fund or defund, as the term was said, that position. The position was funded by the town. The town needing to look at this year's budget and cutting money out of this year's budget chose to cut that position from the school for many, many different reasons. And I think that one is funding other because of the needs within the own police department. But that was a decision that was by the town, not by the school. That doesn't mean that we don't feel that that position or that the tasks that were performed are not important. But that position is not funded in this current year's budget. In 2014, or 2013, 2014, that budget, it's not budgeted, and when the position was cut, it was a surprise to us also. To be able to look at continuing to fund that position within this budget would mean that we would have to pull from different parts of the school. And we have already cut out of this budget based on conversations between the town administrator and the superintendent. So, we are already behind the eight ball, and there is no other money in this year's budget to be able to fund that position. But that doesn't mean that we cannot just say, "The position's cut, everything stays the same." What we have to do in this year, and the superintendent is working on this, is working with the police department, working with the town administrator, to say, "How can we continue to provide what the resource officer provide in different ways?" So, those conversations are going on. So, like you said, that the town, the police department, the school all needs to work together. That's exactly what's happening right now, and I've asked the superintendent to come and give us the output from those conversations that she's having. So, that's this year. Going into next year, that is where we need to have a very, very thoughtful conversation about what we want to do in the next school year. So, looking at calling in the building principals, having the administrators, having the police department involved in that conversation, taking a look at the existing job description of the senior resource officer, taking a look of exactly what is in the best interest of the safety and security of our children in our schools, and what needs to happen going into next year. Then we need to put a dollar amount on that, because we do need to fund it, and then we need to work it into next year's budget. So, it's important for us to be able to separate what needs to happen this year because of the town cut, what are any changes that we need to make based on that cut, but then also plan for the future. And that's what the school committee, but more importantly, the administration is working on. And we will continue to provide reports here at the school committee. But I will welcome, if there's anyone else that would like to address the committee, please feel free to step up to the mic and to the podium. But again, Mr. Robinson, thank you so much for your comments tonight.
Hello. Thank you for having me. My name is Lorene DeKes, and I just had a couple of questions in regards to what I just heard you say. And I'm sure it's my own ignorance for not understanding, but I'm thinking if I don't understand, then other folks might not as well.
It's probably the way that I talk, too. So, I --
No, I'm sure it's not. My question is this. I think what I heard you say was that the school resource officer position was not funded for this year?
The school resource officer was funded this year from the town. The town funded the school resource officer for the school. So, the town, looking to find ways to find additional money in this year's budget, made cuts, and the school -- and one of the decisions that the town made for this year was to cut the school resource officer halfway through the year.
So, for clarification purposes, it was funded initially, the school resource officer position, by the town. Then at some point, because of cuts needed to be made in this 2013, 2014 budget, it -- the $50,000 was cut?
From the -- yes, the town --
From this year.
Right.
So, the 2015 position is something separate, which is what you were saying is going to need to be talked about with the administrators and such.
So, we continue to have conversations with the superintendent, the town administrator, continue to talk about what does the 2014, 2015 budget look like? And is this a position that could be looked at? So, those -- the budget conversation, just so you know, there -- we are way, way deep into the budget conversations --
Certainly.
-- for 2014, 2015. And so, everything is looked at. We were not expecting the school resource officer to be cut this year. So, we understand that something has to be funded next year. So, first of all, what is it? And then, second of all, where does that money come from? Is it 100% out of the schools? Is it 100% out of the town? Or is it a hybrid?
Okay.
And so, that's what's looked at for 2014, 2015. I'm sorry.
Twenty -- correct, for 2015. But I guess I'd like to focus for a little bit on the 2014, because my understanding, and I certainly could be wrong, as I said, is that we're looking at approximately a $50,000 amount of money. I was here at the last school committee meeting where we were talking about budgets, and we were clearly told that we were just, understandably so, too premature to be talking about what the cuts would be and what positions those would be that would be cut, that it wasn't going to be announced at a public forum, understandably so. Shockingly, though, within a matter of two weeks, I'm hearing from folks here that it was a town decision. So, if it's my -- the town is funding the position, loaning this officer to the schools, but the money was already approved. The $50,000 was already approved. He's already way into, obviously, we know we're talking about Officer Baptiste, but we're into February of the $50,000 that was approved for his position. So, I can't grasp out of what might be left for that from February to July, or really till June, when the kids get out of school, the benefit. And when you say the town approved that, who in the town thought? Was it the town administrator? Because certainly, it wasn't here when we talked about budgeting.
Right.
Who thought that was an okay idea without running that by the administrators ahead of time? Because I think that we're a little behind the eight ball. If you're saying that we're going to talk with folks for 2015, those conversations needed to happen long ago to keep our kids safe.
Okay. And so, I appreciate -- there are two different budgets. So, we have the school -- there's one budget, but there's two large sections of it.
Yes.
One that the town administrator is responsible for, and then one that the -- and the board of selectmen, and then one that the superintendent and the school committee are responsible for, completely separate.
Yes.
Okay? So, the position was in the town's side of the budget. So, it was fully funded last year, budgeted and funded last year for the 2014 budget.
Yes.
Okay? I think that it's important to ask some of these questions at the board of selectmen meeting.
Okay.
Only because I don't want to speak for them. But basically, what happened is that they needed to cut out of this current year's budget because of different reasons, and they went through a series of, I don't know how they came to it. Again, I just, I don't want to say anything wrong when it comes to their decisions.
No, but could I ask you a question? Is, did they consult the school committee before that decision was made?
They did not consult the school committee. No.
No. Okay.
They did -- did they consult the superintendent?
They shared the information.
They shared the information.
After a decision was made?
They shared the information with me.
Okay. So, I guess, I'm just hoping that you all can understand --
We do.
-- that we're not trying to take frustration out on you all. It's frustration that these major decisions are being made, and it feels very much reminiscent of other times in this town where decisions are made. You know, we're encouraged to all come to meetings and to be involved and to be proactive. And I feel like folks, especially with the turnout here tonight, folks are clearly doing that and hearing that and want to be involved and want to help, not focus on being the problem, but focus on being the solution and to energetically get involved with helping our schools, because we understand this is the tip of the iceberg. This SRO position is the beginning of bad, bad times, and we all have to come together. It's just incredibly frustrating to get no answers as, again, I'll take this up with the board of selectmen, but to hear that decisions were made or the superintendent was informed of decisions after things were made that impact the safety and well-being of thousands of children. If there's 700 at the middle school and 500 or 600 at mine at DeKes, plans need to be made. We can't have another tragedy like other states have had. And when I hear that the school resource officer position needed to be pulled because of overtime funding for the police department, and that that patrol officer was needed back on patrol, my concern then is what is the plan between the schools, maybe the superintendent of the school committee, and the police departments to keep our kids safe? Because if the talking wasn't done before the position was removed, what's going to happen when an emergency happens?
And that is, so, I just need to just take one piece around --
Sure.
-- the school resource officer is one piece of a safety plan that is instituted in our school.
But he's the contact coordinator between all of those agencies, because as we know, the previous superintendent chose not to go with the system that would have coordinated all of that. So, for now, what we've had, and our faith has been in, the school resource officer to be that communicator.
Right. I hope that there is some -- to put your faith in the superintendent is what I'm asking. To put the same faith in --
And I do. My concern is I don't believe that she's licensed to carry, or that she can carry here, or that she's going to do anything that's going to help if there's an active shooter in our school, or if there's a new town, or whatever. I do have faith in her.
Right. I can understand your point, but I think that it's important, because what I'm also afraid is that I understand the importance of the school resource officer as one piece of the overall safety plan of the whole entire school.
Absolutely.
And because, like anything, if one piece is taken away, the whole rest of it can't crumble. I think that that's when you're setting up a system to fail.
And that would be my concern.
So, there are -- I'm sorry, I'm talking.
Understood.
I want to be able to have a dialogue, so that there are different pieces that are in place, and I can understand your concern, and we will continue to work with the town and the town administrator, the police department, to be able to say what can happen in this year because of the town's decision to cut that position.
Well, may I speak now?
Absolutely.
I'm happy to hear you say that, because previous to me coming here, what you said was those conversations were going to happen for 2015, and that the administrators and the principals and the superintendent would be talking with the police. And my point for coming down here tonight was just that that's too late. Those conversations need to be happening for this year.
Yep, and I appreciate that. I actually, I said that there, that the conversations are happening to, because of the school resource officer being cut, that there are conversations that are going on between the superintendent and the town administrator, as well as the police, the police chief, to discuss what can be put in place because of that decision.
Perfect. For this year, for right now.
100%. And I'm sorry if I didn't say that as clear enough, but there was, there's a two-pronged approach. What do we do this year, as well as planning for the future?
Perfect. That's what I wanted to hear.
Great.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you for being here.
And will that, once a conversation is had and a plan is made, that now, for this year anyway, is going to exclude the SRO, will that information come out to parents and to us once conversations and decisions have been made?
Yep. When I first said in the very beginning is that, based on those conversations, we're going to continue to provide updates at the school committee, as well as I know the superintendent has done a great job of communicating out via different calls and information. So, how we can get that information out, we will.
Perfect. And I will say that the website is fantastic, that the superintendent has set up, very informative and educational to all of us. So, that has been great. It's the other stuff that, the communication wise. So, it sounds like what you're saying is we need to keep coming to school committee meeting. So, I'm sure you'll be thrilled that you're not quite getting rid of me quite yet. So, I will be back. I'm sure you're all thrilled.
I want to say very loud and clear that this kind of participation is very welcomed at the school committee. We have been hearing crickets in here for many, many years. So, I love it. Hold on one second.
I think they're silenced.
The superintendent just wants to say one, please.
Sure.
We are very dismayed of this event, my administrators, myself. We value our security officer. He's done an excellent job. We certainly are doing all we can to make sure that we have pieces in place as we move forward. And we also have had discussions about how do we ensure the position returning to the district come FY15 budget? In fact, I had a discussion right before I came over here with the town administrator. So, it is a high priority for us. I've had conversations with my administrators, and I assure you, none of them are happy. It puts additional pressure on all of us to ensure the safety, because that is our priority, and it's something that we are not going to rest until we've resolved.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the school committee? If so, please come down to the table. Welcome.
Hello.
Hi. Could you state your name?
My name is Jayla Silva, and I'm a sophomore at Wareham High School. I'm here tonight on behalf of many Wareham High School students about the decision for our school resource officer. We as students have signed a petition, and we'd like to present it tonight to inform the school committee and the school administration that we are concerned about how this will affect our overall safety and the climate in our school. We understand that the school department is faced with many budget issues. However, we ask that you reconsider this decision and keep the safety and best interests of our student body in mind. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Would you like the --
Yes, please.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Yes?
I'm Kylie DeKes, and I have what she said for the middle school.
Okay, great. Thank you.
We have petition.
You have the same one? Yep.
I'll take -- thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, whenever there is advocacy in the schools and our students are coming together to be able to express their voice when it comes to their education in the town of Wareham, it is 100% welcomed and applauded. So, thank you. Yes.
My name is Chris Holbrook. I am here for a couple of reasons. Resource officer, I don't think that the schools just need a resource officer. I think the schools need this resource officer. He knows all the kids. He is amazing. He goes above and beyond. I know that, I know it within your budget. I know it was a police budget. I've talked to the town administrator. I know exactly what went on. Well, what people are telling me went on, I know. So, it's not just a resource officer. It's this resource officer. The schools are going to be at such a loss. Now, there were videos posted of meetings from the town regarding the resource officer position, which I think are very important, that everybody views those videos, because the town administrator, along with the old police chief, the now, I don't know, is he acting? Is he interim police chief? It's important that, because they all said this town especially needs a resource officer, not just any town. Most towns are adding resource offices. I know that we're in budget, I know every year it gets worse. Cut, cut, cut. What's next year? I mean, it's ridiculous, the cuts. You're cutting teachers, you're cutting secretaries, you're cutting, I mean, there's not any more cuts you guys can make. And I know it's not your fault. Believe me, I have a lot of respect for you. You're a volunteer. I know how that goes. But you can't do this to our kids. It's not fair. Was, and was there a fight put up when this position was cut? Was there any way you guys could fight it? Was there any argument on our behalf as parents and children? I'm just curious. What happened? I'd like to know. Would anybody else?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I just, I'd like to know. It's our kids.
We're not pleased that this decision was made, and it's our job to keep our kids, our students, safe, our buildings safe, and we do what we need to do to protect and to voice our concerns.
So, you're not pleased, but was there an argument made by the school department on our behalf? Because I'm going to go with it's all of us that are being affected.
Again, we're not happy. We voice our concerns. We try to work collaboratively, but we also will do and continue to do what we need to do to protect our students.
Will that's a yes?
No, I don't think so. But, okay, so, what, there were conversations, there were, so, you could put it, it's a subjective argument, where you basically say, "How hard? How not? How?" And so, yes, there was, that we were disappointed, and that there were conversations that happened. To be able to get into the level of conversations, the level of fighting, will then all of a sudden become a subjective argument on whether we think we did the job or the way or the way that people perceive that we did the job. So I'm telling you that, that there was disappointment. There was, we expressed exactly our concerns regarding this. But the decision was made outside of any decision of this board. The decision was outside of our control.
Okay. My other point is, two resource offices were funded in this state this year by grants. Has anybody looked into grants for resource offices?
It's part of the conversation about the funding that's needed for next year.
Okay.
If there is, I'm not gonna, I'm sorry, if, if somebody has something to say, please come up to the, to the microphone.
I mean, I just, I got that information just from Googling it, so.
Right. There are multiple grants that the school continues to apply for. Multiple grants throughout. This will be looked at as a funding source going into next year.
Thank you. And again, I totally respect that you guys volunteer your time and, believe me, we appreciate it. It's just when our kids' safety is at stake, people get upset.
We feel exactly the same way. I mean, we have kids in the school. So we feel the pain also.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the committee? If so, please come up to the table. Thanks again to everyone tonight that came here tonight and also expressed different ideas and opinions. Again, we really appreciate it. Moving on to good news.
Good news. Our video this evening, you will see our newly formed Wareham Middle School Robotics Team. They took second place out of twenty-eight teams at a regional competition last, or last week in Worcester. Next, you'll see the anchor Wareham in Positivit, Positivity Project is ramping up. We began having a number of website postings and you will see coworkers helping clear cars off in a recent storm. Next, you'll see cooperative students designing a solar house. Lockheed Martin engineer Mark Whalen visited our seventh graders. The Wareham Middle School Honor Society helped stock the St. Vincent de Paul Food Pantry at the, in the St. Patrick's Church. Congratulations to Amber Filkins who scored the one thousand point in her Wareham High School career. And finally, the Beyond School Time hosted Mozzatic Madness, which in all, in which participants of all ages created their own artwork.
Great. Thank you. Are there pieces of good news from, oh, before I go to you guys? Sorry. Good news? Anyone on this side of the table? Nicole, you're all set?
Yes. I know it was already said, but I just wanna personally congratulate Amber Filkins on her one thousandth point. I've been to a few Wareham sporting events in my three years of Wareham High School, but that was probably the most exciting moment ever and it wasn't even happening to me. So she deserves everything that she has gotten. She works so hard and, um, great job, Amber.
So I just have one addition that the superintendent pulled together or asked realtors in the town to come and meet our students, to tour the building, and generally to start to get to know Wareham a little bit better. Again, all in the spirit of educating realtors on the reason why Wareham is a wonderful place to live. So I thought, I just wanna commend the superintendent for starting that. So then realtors come in and really understand and get into our schools and learn the wonderful things that are going on there. And I just wanted to read a quote that was in the Wareham Week that I just thought, I just thought it was a great quote. Jeff Worrell of Prospect Mortgage described Wareham as "an accepting melting pot" "where students from all different backgrounds mingle together unlike other districts where cliques tend to form around ethnicity." He said Wareham is as diverse a community there is in Massachusetts. And I just thought that that was a quote that is something to be proud of. And I wanted to make sure that everybody had a chance to be able to hear that. So I thank Mr. Worrell for his comments and also the superintendent for kind of pulling that together. Moving on to, where's my thing? Minutes. Thank you. I will take a motion to approve the minutes of January twenty-eighth.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Oppose, abstain? Four zero zero. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of January twenty-ninth.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Oppose, abstain? Four zero zero. Great. And just for, for, in case there are any questions, our school committee member Cliff Sylvia was not able to be here tonight. He's actually at a, at a conference away. So that's the reason why Mike's been nice enough to assume that he's chair position. All right. All right. Again, my favorite part of the agenda. We would like to call up the middle school and high school honor societies for their presentation, please. Please just make sure you talk directly into the microphone so the folks at home listening can hear your beautiful voices. Just make sure if you can to introduce yourself when, when, before you speak. It'd be great. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Carolyn King and I'm the current president of the Middle School Honor Society. It's a pleasure to be here, invited to here tonight and to explain to all of you how we adhere to the five pillars. We actually have a poem that was devised for the newest inductees and I've deemed it appropriate to share with all of you as well. The other members, including myself, will read it to you now.
Great, thank you.
Welcome to the Honor Society. Don't be overwhelmed with anxiety. This year's going to be a thriller as long as you follow the five pillars.
You work so hard and got all A's. Now don't give up. You're here to stay. We'll have tons of fun throughout the year. You'll make new friends and meet new peers.
You are entering Honor Society. We assure a large variety of talented kids with lots of skills, with lots of dreams to fulfill.
To join Honor Society, you must achieve all A's, but that's not all the job portrays. Citizenship plays a large role and it's the part that makes us whole.
Take charge, be who you are. You'll find this method will take you far. Every time you try your best, your effort undergoes a test. Do everything at your own pace. The best victories are won when it's not a race.
Thank you. That was terrific.
Good evening. I am Emily Nash, social chair of the two thousand fourteen school year. All sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students are eligible to be a part of Honor Society at the middle school after receiving straight A's for two consecutive trimesters. Once someone has achieved this, they will receive a letter inviting them to apply. This includes an essay where the applicant must relate each of the five pillars of success, leadership, scholarship, character, citizenship, and service to their own personal experiences. The essay will, the essay will be reviewed by faculty council. If your essay and application meets the expectations required, you get an acceptance letter and then a formal induction will follow. A student must maintain all A's, although if they happen to slip, they have a trimester to raise their grades. It's almost like appropriation period. We are also encouraged to do seven community service activities, which we'll hear about later.
Hello. I'm Hannah Edelston and I'm the social chair slash vice president of the two thousand thirteen Honor Society. I'm here to talk about one of the five pillars, citizenship. As you can see, the five pillars are leadership, character, scholarship, citizenship, and service. And the other pillar is the pillars of hope, which is our Relay for Life team, which you'll hear about later. Well, I'm here to talk about citizenship. Citizenship is one of the five pillars of success we follow as members of Honor Society. When I looked up citizenship on Google, the definition said something like being part of a community. I think of citizenship as being part of something bigger than you. To be a good citizen, it means to make a difference in your community. In Honor Society, we get many opportunities to help the community and be good citizens. But volunteering doesn't make you a good citizen. What makes you a good citizen is the understanding that there's nothing in it for you except seeing the joy your volunteering brings to others. This group isn't just a brag about our successes. It promotes who good citizens are. Citizenship isn't something you can be tested on or given. It's something that is built by being the change you wanna see in the world. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Um, this is my service speech. A community relies on people helping one another through voluntary service. It could be as simple as raising money for a charity or donating clothes to a goodwill. This year, we in our society have taken it upon ourselves to give back and do our own volunteer work while asking for nothing in return. We peer tutor, participate in the DeGus Crafts Fair, do canned food drives, babysit at PTA meetings, and so much more. From when we were young, we were taught a rule, the golden rule, which is to treat others the way you want to be treated, to have a mutual respect for one another because at the end of the day, we are bonded as a community. But to me, this rule goes much farther than that. We can tell ourselves that there's only so much we can do to improve a situation and that someone else will have to solve it. But we can't afford to think like that anymore. If you wanna see a change in the town that you live in or even the world, be that change. If you are in trouble or having a hard time, you would want someone to help you. I realize that through Honor Society and volunteering, I like seeing people happy. It's that satisfying sense of accomplishment because I actually helped people in my town. It makes me want to do more because this is how we progress. The best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in the service of others. Mahatma Gandhi. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a speech about Relay for Life. Out of every volunteer activity we do in our society, Relay for Life is the most influential and significant to me. Relay for Life is one of many organizations in the country bringing people together in the battle against cancer. Millions of Americans know firsthand the horrors of this disease or have seen its effects on other families. Cancer is a mystery to us all. Why does it happen? Is there a vaccine to prevent it? Sometimes we feel helpless over things we cannot control. But in circumstances like these, the only thing we can do is fight and use that strength to turn negative into a positive. Relay for Life is an organized overnight walk and a fundraiser against cancer. Each team member has to raise a minimum of a hundred dollars to participate per person. But most go above and beyond the requirements. We all assemble as teams on a track and have games, food, music. And every year, there's a different theme for the teams to follow, adding a festive and enjoyable atmosphere, getting everyone inspired to be creative and raise money. To honor those who have lived through the struggle, we have a survivor's lap at the beginning of the event while, while other participants cheer on the sidelines. Following that is a luminary ceremony that takes place after dark when the candles glow the brightest. This is to remember the lives lost to cancer and support those still fighting. During this occasion, at times, we are asked to be silent in respect and other times, we can laugh and be in high spirits knowing we made a difference and that someday we will win the battle. Relay for Life is an opportunity to show cancer fighters or survivors that they aren't alone. What lies behind us and what lies before us are small matters compared to what lies within us. From my favorite poet Ralph Waldo Emerson. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Renianna Dillon, inductee of the Wareham Middle School Honor Society. Throughout the year, we take part and manage many events schoolwide and around the town of Wareham. Our most recent events were donating clothes and canned goods to local charities. We observed that the lost and found boxes were overflowing and making our school unpresentable and unattractive. We, we then decided to call local charities to find out who is interested in taking the clothes. A group of Honor Society members gathered all of the lost and found clothes that were in the vicinity of the school and categorized them by size, gender, and type of clothing. My mother volunteered and dropped them off at the Church of Nazarene for a charity called Turning Point. The other event we were completely responsible for was taking and packing boxes of canned goods to the St. Vincent de Paul Pantry, which is a part of St. Patrick's Church. Wareham Middle School collected ten boxes worth of canned goods. Any student who brought canned goods would receive a reward. Honor Society also manages a peer tutoring program. Any member who is able and willing to take part in it will sign up and go through a training process. The tutor is only to tutor students who are in their grade level and below. There is a tutoring session once a week and the tutor helps the student with their homework, a concept they're struggling with, or to study for an upcoming test. Donating clothes and cans and peer tutoring is just a small portion of what we really do in Wareham Middle School Honor Society.
Hello. My name is Colin Westgate and I'm the secretary of the Wareham Middle School Honor Society. Tonight, I'm going to be talking to you about some of the things we do in Honor Society as part of our service to the school and our community. I'll start with one of the things we do in school. Last year, we started an annual event in our school known as the Penny Wars. The Penny Wars are to raise money for a cause. Last year was to help a middle school student who needed a bone marrow transplant. Although this year, it is undecided what the money will go to. It works by having students collect pennies for their homerooms to gain points. They can also bring in other money such as dollars to subtract points from another homeroom. Last year, it raised a lot of money. We also do quite a few things outside of school. Already this year, we have done many things. We helped during, at the DeGus Craft Fair. The DeGus Craft Fair was an event held at DeGus School where people brought in crafts they made to sell them. We helped with games, concessions, and many other things. We also help during PTA meetings. Once a month, we babysit the children of PTA parents so that they can attend a meeting. From doing all these things, we hope to spread the word that we are here to help and that people can come to us for help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Do you guys mind just staying there just for one moment? And it might be scary, but I'm gonna open it up to questions from people up here. Okay? Do you have any? Okay. Any questions?
Yes. So, believe it or not, I can remember when I was a teenager and I couldn't wait to drive. And I even thought about legally consuming alcohol. But I didn't really remember thinking with great anticipation about the first day I could vote. Now, since citizenship is one of those pillars of your society, and I'm going to tell you a fact that confuses me, and maybe you can help me understand why. The, the, the segment of the population that votes the least are the young people. Could you tell me why that is?
Well, I'm not quite sure. Like, I'm going to go to my conference.
Okay.
I'm not quite sure myself, but I assume it's because most young people don't concern themselves with, um, everything that's current in our, you know, economy and system and government. And they're just more self-absorbed, not like per se anyone here. But just generally, they're a little more self-absorbed than they were before and were just not as concerned with others around us.
You all, you all make me very proud of the Wareham Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Oh, you did? Oh, sorry, one more question.
I was coughing earlier, sorry. I think we just saw our future student rep up there.
No, of course, so that she would stay on forever.
I know, you did a great job. Thank you, thank you for coming. Did I hear correctly that the way this works is the younger grades get an invite if, if they get all As?
Um, you are only eligible to get the packet to get into Honor Society starting in sixth grade. If you get consecutive trimesters of As, then you get a packet saying that you have been invited to join the Honor Society and that you will be required to write a essay about how you have portrayed the five pillars.
Are there any sixth graders in the Honor Society?
Not yet, because we've only been through one trimester. They've only been in the middle school for one trimester.
Oh, okay, so it wouldn't be, you wouldn't be in, you know, fifth graders that were incoming into sixth grade, they'd have to actually be in sixth grade and get those trimesters in.
Correct. Well, the fifth grade wasn't in the middle school last year and the sixth grade has only been here for one and a half trimester, so.
Can you come to the microphone, I'm sorry?
I didn't want to be on TV.
I know. Either do we, so.
Yeah, so the fifth graders are not eligible, um, as of yet, because we've always just had the middle school sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And the sixth grade is new to the school as well as the fifth grade. So right now, I'm trying to focus on the sixth, seventh, and eighth.
So the, the fifth graders today, will they be able to be, to get in the Honor Society next year?
Next year, yes.
But this year, the, the incoming fifth, the incoming sixth graders are eligible till they get three trimesters in?
Right. They would have to have, I mean, we have to reevaluate now that the fifth grade's in the school. Um, but yes.
Thank you.
At the end of fifth grade, we'll look at their grades too.
Thanks.
Thanks again. Thanks again for being here and your presentation tonight. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Joseph Nash. I am here to represent the Junior National Honor Society. Tonight, I will speak, I will be speaking about character, one of the pillars of success. The pillars are a building block to the Junior National Honor Society, as well as the Middle School Honor Society and the National Honor Society. I just got to get my PowerPoint up.
Okay. Is it on the desktop?
Yep.
Great.
All right.
You guys are doing great, seriously.
Sorry.
No, don't be.
All right, so character defines who we are as students and people. By demonstrating good character, we hope to set examples for the other people in our school system and our community. Character is a key to being successful because it demonstrates our key values and morals. Having character prepares us for our future as adults and we hope to pass it along to others along our journeys. Character is the real foundation of all worthwhile success. John Hayes Hammond. Some community service that we do, we are in the Junior Onset Association. Thanks to Madison Semple and Kylie Silva, the Honor Society will continue to be involved in more local events. We were just involved in the Christmas in the Parks event, which I heard turned out very well. I wasn't able to go. Many students who are part of the Junior National Honor Society seek their own ways to benefit their community. Whether it is volunteering at a hospital, serving at a local food pantry, or even babysitting the neighbors' kids, a student in the Honor Society will continue to be selfless and truly remarkable leaders in their communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Are there questions from the committee? Yes.
Not a question, I just want to thank both groups that have come up here. Because a lot of people don't realize what you do outside the classroom with all the support Relay for Life and things like that. And I want to thank the superintendent too for having all of these groups coming forward because there's information that unless we're in the schools, and my colleague, Mr. Flaherty, is probably one that attends a lot of events in schools and gets the insight, so again, thank you for everything that you do.
Yes.
I don't think most people realize, and I didn't, that when I was luckily enough a member of National Honor Society, it was just an award and no one ever turned it down because all you had to do was smile and say thank you. Now, it's quite a commitment. And it's for that reason, I understand that not everybody accepts the award. So I just want everybody to realize these people are not only great scholars, they're also great citizens who have made a commitment in order to be a part of National, Junior National Honor Society in this case, so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Yes.
Well, thank you for coming as well. Great presentation. How many Honor Society members are there in the high school?
There's two different Honor Societies at the high school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're going to see the Senior Honor Society next.
Okay. Which, which one was this? This was?
This was the junior.
Junior, okay. And, and they're both. I mean, I'd like to just know, I mean, if, if there's any sort of overlap or correlation to the, this type of students that end up in the Honor Society, what else they're interested in in the high school? Are there a lot of DECA students in the Honor Society or?
We have a wide.
JROTC?
We have a wide variety of students in the Honor Society.
It's just, it's just wide, it's diverse?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Again, you're doing great. Are there any questions from the committee? All right, great. Thank you for being here tonight and for your presentation. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Charlamagne Rasme and I'm a senior at Wareham High and I'm also the President of National Honor Society. So what is National Honor Society? National Honor Society is an organization that recognizes students for achievement, not only academically, but also in aspects of service, character, leadership, and scholarship. The Wareham High National Honor Society is known as the Ruth Tompkins Chapter. Ruth Tompkins was an educator at Wareham High who was a prime example of what National Honor Society is and what it represents. Okay, in order to be invited to. In order to be invited to the National Honor Society, students. Sorry, gosh. So bad. A student must have and maintain a GPA of ninety percent. And after they are invited, they have to submit a portfolio which basically shows that they possess the qualities of the pillars, which are leadership, scholarship, service, and character, sorry. If they're accepted, they have to commit, or commit to four hours a month. And being a part of National Society is a big requirement for others, a big commitment to students. And by being a part of National Society, students are shown that they're leaders not only inside the classroom, but also outside of the classroom.
Hi, I'm Nicole Nalt, Secretary of National Honor Society at Wareham High School. When each of us was inducted as a member of the National Honor Society, we took a pledge and a part of this pledge is that members will be leaders twenty-four seven. Whether we're in school or out in our community, we're role models displaying leadership qualities at all times. We are involved in our school through academics, clubs, and sports. We are outstanding citizens, outstanding students, club officers, and team captains. National Honor Society members are also members of clubs like Code Club, Student Council, Global Education, DECA, and many more. We are varsity athletes in sports including tennis, softball, basketball, soccer, and others. Some of us have jobs in the community such as cashiers and babysitters, and many of us have summer jobs. We get involved in our community through our school, clubs, and sports, but mostly our service. We are leaders that set by example.
Hi, my name is Hope Wallace. I'm the Treasurer of the National Honor Society. The National Honor Society members are committed to doing community service all throughout the school year. We run an American, red, red cross, excuse me, blood drive that collects an average of sixty units of blood annually. We have written letters and made a mural for veterans in the past. We also make food baskets each year to give to the needy for Christmas. Okay, so National Honor Society members are committed to serving the community. Students that are members for an entire school year must complete forty hours of community service, while students inducted in January must complete twenty hours. Service hours are a combination of group and individual service. Members work at Damien's Pantry, the Wareham Free Library, recycling centers, coaching JBA, town festivals, the Boys and Girls Club, and tutoring. Here are some pictures from some of our group activities that we've done over the past few years.
Hi, my name's Emily Beckyaki. I'm a member of the National Honor Society. So I'm going to talk to you about the Honorable that we participate in. So not only do we do service, but we like to put a little friendly competition into what we do. So we compete in these Honables with schools in our conference like the SCC, like other sports teams. So we've been competing for the past three years. Our record is four and two. Thankfully, we have a winning record. So what we do is we go in and kind of play like a Jeopardy game with other schools. And it's really fun, as you can see, this is last year against DR. And this is just a way to get into other schools and compete and get to know the other Honor Societies and collaborate with them. And here's us going to ORR and Bourne. This year, we've already reversed ORR and Bourne? Yeah, DR and Bourne, excuse me. And it's just a great way to get involved with the other National Honor Societies in the community. Outside the community. And again, these are other places we've traveled to in the years. All right, I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation. Just stay there, I'm going to open it up again. Questions?
So, the, the Honorable, is that something that's done during school or is it open to the public that people can go in and watch? Because I think it's, it's great to see the support for Wareham and you always hear the negative stuff about Wareham and, and I think it'd be nice if it's not open to maybe do it one night and, and have the parents and, and everyone come and support that, so nice job on that. And four and two is a pretty good record.
Thank you.
So there's a lot of talk about the lack of upward mobility in this country. You're obviously wonderful citizens already and, and academically high achieving and presumably on your way to higher education. Do any of the four of you feel in any way that you're not capable of doing anything you want to do?
I don't think so.
Good. I'm counting on hearing great stories.
So the only question that I have is, I'm always, my ears perk up whenever we talk about service and students getting back to involved in our community and giving back. So the question that I had is, I saw some of the things that the group is interested in. Is there anything that the school can do to make it easier to be able to find service opportunities to be able to complete the forty hours? Are you able, do you have all the information you need or are you kind of opening it up, you know, searching online for volunteer opportunities?
I think for the most part, or just, um, I think for the most part that each student just kind of finds their own way in the community. Like, for example, I, I'm very big into athletics, so I volunteer at the JBA and the girls softball. And other students, they, we do a great job of finding things that we're interested in and getting out into the community ourselves and taking the initiative to find those companies. But if assistance was needed, I'm sure that we could find somewhere for someone to go in the community to complete their service.
Also, there's a bulletin board that the National Honor Society has and that posts some volunteering opportunities. And there's opportunities that we talk about at our biweekly meetings too. So we do a lot of group community service and we let people know when there's opportunities to volunteer.
Yes, please.
Also, like, also Mrs. Nelly has like contacts that contact her via email or any way and then she like relays it to us and we have, like, through our agenda, we have all these community service opportunities that we can do through there. So there's always ways or opportunities for students to get community service whenever they need it.
Great. I just, I think it's a great message to the community, to the town, to nonprofit organizations, to school groups, to, that, that this is, you know, a requirement and some great students that are available to be able to get out there and to volunteer their time. So I would just encourage that if there are things that people are thinking about, especially around nonprofit groups and our schools and even our town, to make sure that they get in contact with each one of these groups and make sure that their opportunities are listed, so, great. You guys, it was a fabulous presentation and again, I appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
We're just going to take a three-minute recess, just to have an opportunity to mingle with any of the parents that are here from the students that were here. And we'll be back in just about three minutes.
Sure, three minutes.
Uh, thank you again. We took just, uh, what was supposed to be three, it turned out to be five, six-minute recess, just to be able to again, thank the presentation from our, our Honor Societies. And again, it was, it was a great presentation and we appreciate their time tonight. So next on the agenda is acceptance of gifts.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, we have eight gifts that I will be asking.
Can I just ask everybody to just, just for the. Can I just ask everybody, just for the people at home? Thank you.
We have eight gifts that I will be asking for acceptance. Five hundred dollars from the Bag Two School for the East Wareham School Playground.
I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, four zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Forty-five dollars from Mrs. Anne Marie Fillion, Lead Teacher at East Wareham Early Childhood Center for the East Wareham School Playground.
Great. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, four zero zero. Thank you very much, Anne Marie.
One hundred dollars from the Water Whiz to the WHS for band uniforms.
Nice. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed, abstaining, four zero zero. Thank you very much, Water Whiz.
Five hundred dollars from the Onset Bay Association Incorporated to WHS for band uniforms.
Take a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, four zero zero. Thank you very much, Onset Bay.
Seventy-five dollars from Paul Koplansky to the WHS for band uniforms.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, four zero zero. Thank you very much.
Two hundred dollars from SPA by Paul to WHS for band uniforms.
I'll take a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, four zero zero. These are going to be some nice Albus uniforms.
Six hundred dollars from Arabella Insurance to WHS Chess Team.
I'll take a motion to approve?
Was that the chess team?
Chess team.
Outstanding.
I'll take a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, four zero zero.
And three hundred dollars from GH Dunn Insurance to the WHS Chess Team.
I'll take a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, four zero zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the school calendar.
We've explored various options for the school calendar. If we would start before Labor Day, the last have no February or April vacations, but one week in March, the last scheduled day would be June nineteenth. Unfortunately, this would be, present quite a conflict for some employees as well as for some students, as March is MCAS week. So therefore, that would negate that school calendar. What I would like to propose would be for the committee to adopt the Calendar One, which would have us starting on August twenty-seventh with in-service, August twenty-eighth with staff in-service. Our first day of school would be September second. Our last day of school would be June twenty-fifth. And the reason why, contractually, this is a bargaining item, contractual item with our unions. And since we're entering into negotiations, then I would suggest this could be a possible discussion during the negotiations to alter the calendar as we move forward. But have we, since we've not entered into negotiations, I would recommend that you adopt the school calendar for the FY fourteen, fifteen school year, and then we would explore other alternatives moving forward.
Questions or comments? Now I'll take a motion to approve? Yes?
In your newsletter, you comment on Good Friday would have a ten thousand dollar-plus, and I assume, negative impact on the district if we moved it. Is that a correct statement?
That is correct. It would cost, contractually, ten thousand eighty dollars.
Okay. Thank you. So your proposal is to keep Good Friday, keep February and April vacations, and the last day, and the first day of school is September second, and the last day of school is June twenty-fifth? Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
And so this is, there's no change from the last time this was presented, right?
That's correct.
And why would it, why would Good Friday cost that much money if we got rid of it?
Because of contractual items in the contracts, we would owe employees to work Good Friday.
Yeah?
All right.
Sorry.
It becomes Bad Friday.
But it is something that, again, going into this year, we are going into negotiations, and something that if the committee or if citizens have suggestions to the school calendar, this is public on our school website, take a look, make suggestions in writing to the superintendent. So then, as we're going into contract negotiations, the school committee and the superintendent can consider those, and then enter into collective bargaining to make some of those happen. Yes?
So I don't want to speak for all students, because I don't think I should do that, but I personally think that adding those few days on the end is not as significant as removing the two vacations, in my opinion. I know others share that opinion, because breaks are, in my opinion, necessary for a student to remain sane, I think. So I agree with that option, to keep the vacations and get out a few days later. I think it's worth the few extra days at the end, personally.
Thank you.
That's all I want to say.
Nope. Appreciate your comments. Is there anything else? Now I'll take a motion to approve the school calendar?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Four zero zero. Thank you. Policy on Facebook and social networking.
I handed you...
Madam Chair, excuse me.
Yes.
I'm going to recuse myself from this.
Okay. But don't leave too far, because I have a change.
Don't go too far.
Don't go too far. You received a...
You can go sit down there if you want to.
A handbook from the town, because they have a social networking policy. And what I would like to do is to provide the committee an opportunity to look at their network policy. We're going to explore it even further to see how we can blend our policies, and then we will bring something back.
So you can come back, because we're moving it to another time. Yes, exactly. That's why I didn't stop you. And also, I just hope that you kept on going. I'm only joking.
Sorry to disappoint.
No, I'm only joking. All right, so we will have this. So the policy that the superintendent handed out, again, the town has a policy on social networking. I ask that everyone take a look, read it over, and provide any comments or any questions to the superintendent regarding our policy in this one.
On that note, when does the superintendent's advisory committee meeting, again, is the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh.
So maybe we could probably discuss it then, too? I mean, among the community?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
We haven't set the agenda, but it will be on there.
Anything else? Okay, next agenda item is the Credit for Life program, Wareham High School. Welcome.
We've got a few people here from the Cape Cod Five Cent Savings Bank, and as you're aware, they're moving into town here. And they do a great program called the Credit for Life in many schools on the Cape. And we have with us here Bert Taylorman, who is the EVP, and I'll let him explain what that is. And before I turn it over to Bert, I just want to also mention, I've got Katie Marchesault, who is our Science and Math Department Head, who's worked with the folks here, specifically Kathy Maury, who's, to my, to Katie's right, behind me. We have Ann Burnett here, who's, I believe, going to be the manager here in Wareham, Chris Richards, and Jim Austin, a Wareham High School grad as well, here today. So I'll turn it over to Bert, and we do have a short video for you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Great. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Bert Taylorman, so I'm an Executive Vice President at the Cape Cod Five, which really means that, you know, I don't have as many bosses, but there are lots of people at the bank who do lots and lots of work on this. And, you know, I only get to show up and say nice things, so the credit really belongs to the team. So we're going to show you a video, but before you watch the video, just kind of a couple of things to think about, and that is, you're probably thinking, gee, why does a bank really care about this, and why do you, why do we do this? And so we ran, came across this program a few years ago, and we piloted with a high school on the Cape, and you're going to see that video. And since then, we've been able to work with a bunch, pretty much every other public high school on the Cape to do Credit for Life Fair. And it's basically, it is an educational day. Obviously, we appreciate all the help on this part of the school. You are, the school is their educators. All we do is provide a framework for a great experience for the students, and a great volunteering opportunity for folks in the community, and a great volunteering opportunity for folks who work at the bank. And one of the things that really comes out of this is, you'll see, the kids are dressed for success, and, you know, the takeaway, I think, from all the volunteers at the event is, boy, you feel, really feel good, because here you see all these high school seniors, they're asking great questions, they're learning financial lessons that will help them as they enter the real world. Because what they are doing is, they are playing the role of an adult with a real budget, and they're going around and they're purchasing all the services and all the expenses that we all incur in real life. And, you know, let's face it, in this day and age, kids don't get the opportunity to do that. And so regardless of whether they are going to be a college freshman the following year, whether they are going to be in the service, whether they are going to be working, they are going to be responsible for managing a budget. And that is the framework that this provides. So it's an inspiring day for everyone involved, and so we'll show you the video, and then we're happy to answer some questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
The bank is a very involved committee to provide education and support education. We have various missions through our foundation, graduate grants, laptop scholarships, student seniors, various educational missions, and talking to the folks at BYU. They're very eager to trust in the students.
Cape Cod five close to high schools that have a real lesson, a real-life lesson for students, while studying for literacy. We'd be interested in having your whole senior class go off campus and practice real-life skills. The current collective experience.
One of the wonderful things about the Credit for Life model is it enables them to actually assume aggression and go through the process of planning and managing their budget, gaining understanding of how much things actually cost.
We came in, we got our name tag, our career, and our info, and then from there, we have to go back to different groups. And then we're going to treat them, people, and see what money is spending. You try to stay within your budget.
People have family consideration, everything, like retirement, and a lot of things I don't ever consider.
Everything is a market basis, it's going to continue, and the money just keeps adding up. Everybody who, that people, they work in that very same house.
It's not something that was pulled out of the air. Real figures from our community, your actual smartphone is exactly knowing, knowing, knowing the money.
It's heavy, though, there's a lot, so there's a lot for them to do there.
And he did make a real, different smartphone, they're going to see that, and they talked to people, and I think that's on there.
My parents, they all grew, they just have a great experience. And, you know, my movie, I was printing the entire day office, rather than having, someone will call me and just tell me, actually, everyone's experience is made a lot better.
It's so important to us to have community friendships. These are the kinds of things that we just couldn't do. This is a new undertaking. And we have, we've been, we've had one community involved since I was out of that met every other week, every couple of weeks, and then they might not close, we met that week.
The community works really hard, and we really have some great leadership and some great ideas for the team. Because our goal is not to make a great budget, it is really covering the lessons of great budget, great credit for savings.
In a few weeks, they're going to be ready now to the real world, the developed world. So it's important to experience that, how, you know, what will happen next week in terms of things will be meeting, live high school seniors, interview with them, and talk about the lessons of recording, and talk about how this may change their view of what they immediately will be using.
My dad works in like management, and he does budgets and things like that, and I just look at it, and I say, I could never do that. But actually, like, doing it out here, it's a lot more practical, like, completely happening there.
Today is just kind of like a, like a recent, like a little exhibition, I thought I'd do, and they push out the rehearsal, like, you actually have to do this thing, so I just want to be, as forward prepared as I can be.
Community involvement's always been very important at the time. And I think the act forever, when it is in the real-life education, when it's in the community, is an indication of that community or education.
Really, the important skills of sustainable financial management are critical. And in 2010, we encouraged that to be able to have school systems and communities, door area programs, we were actively able to reach fourteen hundred bits in 2010. Just as reading, writing, and written paper are critical parts of being successful as an adult, skills of financial management, being able to manage your life, is so critical to being successful in any way. Because if you don't have those skills, you will not be able to achieve your potential.
Our proposed date is going to be on the twenty-eighth of February. This event will occur at approximately eight-thirty in the morning. We will commandeer the gymnasium for approximately ninety minutes, and then the students will end up going back to their third block period or lunch, whichever comes first for them. And we're very excited to have the Cape Cod Five Cent Savings Bank. And also, we have a lot of local businesses that are involved, and I'll certainly make sure I forward all of the businesses that have sent volunteers, and many Wareham businesses, as well as local businesses that are going to be involved. I also will pass out everything the students will receive, and ironically, Kim, I think someone went online and saw what a first-year teacher would make, and this is their budget sheet that they would receive, and this person is actually a teacher. And you'll be able to see how they're going to work through all the boosts to figure out what it's going to cost, what they can afford, what they can't afford. And they get to have a nice bag, and it's going to be an exciting day for the students as well. And also, I'll pass this out as well, and they have a nice little binder to go along with it. So I'll bring this up to you.
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation. I'll open it up to questions.
First of all, I applaud your efforts to educate the community on the students on such an important area. I guess I have a, I have a generic question about these things that feel good and intuitively seem like the right thing to do, which is, how do you know that you're succeeding? You obviously are trying to have an impact on these students. Is there any kind of measurement of any kind, of any sort, either at the end of the day, a month later, to measure what kind of knowledge transfer has in fact occurred? Well, I mean, if, it's an excellent question. And so when we, when we look at, you know, why do we invest resources in this without maybe having, you know, a very tangible measure at the end of the day? Again, we feel, based on, you know, the feedback we've received, and I think you saw some of it in the video, where you have young people who are now making the connection between what their parents do and, you know, the experience they just had. That's, that's, that's an eye-opener, right? And so, you know, you've made an impression there. And basically, when we look at, you know, again, we're not educators, we provide a framework, but the thing that matters to us is the general well-being of a community. And so if this, this is a way where, you know, we can partner with the schools and partner with businesses in the community... partner with businesses in the community to provide a meaningful experience for the young people in the community, some of whom are going to end up living there and so if it helps them be better able to handle their finances as they go through, you know, the early stages of adulthood, you know, that's worthwhile. And again, do we do follow-up testing? No, but did we, have we talked to enough teachers to hear the feedback about that the kids talked about this experience several times, you know, as the school year progressed? That means you've made an impression. I would suggest that, that it's quite possible the impact is ephemeral and more importantly, if you, if you did some kind of follow-up, you might be able to tailor the program slightly different, tweak it as it goes on to, to make it less ephemeral and to make the impact that much greater, but to just continue to do something that feels good with anecdotal evidence that people remember a fun day or a thoughtful day or whatever is not doing the effort that you're making justice.
I think in the video you saw the principal, that was mentioned, him going back a month later and doing some type of evaluation. I know that Katie has been working with Kathy to make sure we do something advisory after the fact, to get some type of maybe measurement. There wouldn't be a pre and a post, but just to have an evaluation and Kathy's here to talk about that.
Hi, I'm Kathy Mori. Thank you very much for having us in tonight. What we've done, every school system is a little bit different depending upon the climate, depending upon what they have in their curriculum already for personal finance or managing your money or economics because this is a day of all about choices. We have an extensive evaluation that the students complete before they leave that day and we do tweak that depending upon, you know, we'll give that to Scott and say how, you know, will this all fit with Wareham or should we ask some different questions? One school has done some Socratic seminars on this, another school has asked 14 of us to come back in because their evaluation, the students wanted to learn more about credit. So I'm just developing a lesson plan on that. We'll bring in some volunteers to hit all their senior homerooms or advisories and we'll, we'll do a follow-up lesson on that. So everybody's a little bit different on their follow-up. Wareham has a personal finance course, so I know everybody doesn't take it, but those students are going to have a little bit of an edge and we'll be able to complement that curriculum for them and the students that don't take that as an elective will have an opportunity to say what they thought the best part of the day was, what they feel they would need some more information on and that's what Katie and I will work on after we see the evaluations and if there is a follow-up that seems like it's required of us to come back in, we'll do that. So right now, it really depends upon the school system itself and what they're looking for for follow-up.
Thank you very much for your efforts.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
I think it's a excellent program. I wish it was in place 10 years ago. Helping the kids understand the value of a dollar and also to me it seems after going through this, this is a one-day program, correct?
Correct.
They might get a little more insight as to what we as committee members and the superintendent has to do when you're faced with those tough cuts that you have to do, talking about healthcare and things like that. So I just want to commend you and I'm 110% behind this program and it was nice to see. You just showed Dennis Yamath, but how many other schools have, has this program gone to?
I believe at this point, every high, every high, public high school on Cape Cod except for one.
And in Intucket.
And in Intucket, that's right.
And in the areas.
Ten high schools and, and D Y, we have, was it our fourth year back or fifth year back at D Y? Fourth year back and so it's, it's, it gets repeated and obviously educators have a very tight schedule and I mean, I think, again, we try to improve it every year and the fact that I think we keep getting invited back to schools is an indication of the success of the program too.
And Bert, Sandwich is the closest school to us that, just based on this? Thank you.
Is this geared for the entire high school or is this just seniors? I'm not sure if I missed it.
Senior class.
Senior class only. Okay. Thank you.
Nicole, did you have anything? Okay, great.
I was just interested in what Nicole was going to ask, but because Jeff covered it all pretty well.
Okay. Thank you again for your presentation tonight. The one question that I had was, this, I hope, you know, we're, we're very excited that you're coming into our town and I think that I look forward to other partnerships that we might be able to explore, but this, I do wish that something like this was started way before because when you first, when a child first goes to orientation at a college, in the orientation, they have six or seven different credit card companies that are there that are just doling out credit cards and, you know, there are a lot of students that fall into that and so, you know, the only thing that I would say is being able to expand this into other grades because it, it absolutely is crucial for students to understand the value of the dollar or how to budget. There are some kids in our school system today that as soon as they can get a job, they will or, you know, even, even younger than that, babysitting and just to understand what they will get by saving. So saving that, that is actually, it's, it's something that they, that they're in control of and something that can open up so many doors. So, you know, being able to expand this into the lower grades, into the middle, even into the elementary, just to be able to understand what savings is and what it actually does for you, I just think would be hugely beneficial to students not only here but in other places.
And you're absolutely right and actually our, you know, financial education is one of the things that is very important to us as a company and again, for all those reasons I mentioned earlier and our financial education's efforts actually span, you know, from, from elementary school all the way to the senior citizen centers depending on, you know, what's appropriate and again, it's all volunteer and it's all, you know, holistic financial advice.
Great. And I would not be doing my job if I didn't say that the Wareham schools have multiple sponsorship opportunities, so anytime that you would like to find out information about that, let us know.
That's great. Thank you. We were happy to, that a couple of the Wareham school teachers actually applied to our mini-grant program a little while ago, so that was great.
Great.
And I do want to just thank Steve Rumbold, the senior dean, who saw this opportunity and followed through with it and put it on my lap and he thought it was very important for his seniors to have this program in place, so I do want to thank him as well.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Anything else from the committee? All right. Thank you again for being here tonight. Thank you all for coming. Always love new faces in the audience. All right, so moving on to the Wareham High School Course of Studies.
Ready?
Why does she always put you, why do we always put you at the end of the agenda?
I asked to be at the end this time.
You did?
Once.
I, no, no, you're there from now on.
No, 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 thanks. I think there's, there's some type of clause, but I do have copies here and I also have the ever-famous cheat sheets that I know you all like and as you can remember from the last few presentations, we highlight the changes and what we're going to do is just go over the changes and certainly by department, answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Just passing down or you're going to?
Take one, pass it down. Two different, two files.
It's going to be a test on us.
I know you already had these, but Stephen probably electronically and I even made sure to hand one to Dr. Sylvia to make sure he had a copy before he left. And what I'll do is I'll allow you to use, utilize the cheat sheet, but I'll go through department by department, page by page and this is really, as you can remember, a student-run process with help from the teachers in each department as well and with help from the department heads and ultimately the assistant principal and myself. So I'm going to, if I can, skip through to page six to talk about our junior-senior dual enrollment and I'm going to ask Mrs. Freitas, who has been the dual enrollment coordinator for many years, to come on up and she's going to talk about the two programs that we have, one that you're very familiar with, which is the eighth grade dual enrollment and one that you're probably not as familiar with because we're going to announce it, I believe, for the first time tonight, a great opportunity that we have, so I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Freitas, the assistant principal.
Mrs. Freitas, just one clarifying question. Scott, do you remember, I think we take a vote on this or do we not take a vote on this?
I believe you do.
I think we do.
I believe you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mrs. Freitas, go right ahead.
No problem. Well Rhonda, you wanted to know about partnerships, we have a partnership for you. We are, we came before you about the eighth grade dual enrollment not too long ago and one of the things that we talked about was challenging students and offering them an opportunity to put themselves in a different position to really motivate them and help them step up a little bit more than maybe they have in the past. This time, we're coming forward to you to, for your approval for our dual enrollment program as, with a partnership that we have with Bridgewater State College, university rather. Back in August, we started this conversation with the president of the college and we gave them a proposal. I believe that you have a copy of that and this has really come to fruition in the last few months as Mr. Palladino and I have met with several people. We had very good backing and full support by the president, Dr. Mullifaria. Since then, we have met with the dean of admissions, Greg Meyer. We have also met with the dual enrollment coordinator at Bridgewater State, Sharon Peterson, vice president Clark, and his assistant, Mary Delgado. In these meetings, we have proposed that we are, we're trying to increase our dual enrollment program. One of the things that we found through talking with students is that they really wanted, they want to take on the challenge and they're even willing to, you know, the minimal cost that they are, they do have to incur because of the dual enrollment, they're willing to do that as well, but the biggest obstacle to them really is the transportation piece. And our proposal to Bridgewater State University was to find a cost-effective way without incurring any cost to Wareham Public Schools to provide transportation and a reduced tuition rate. And since we have been meeting with them, I am very happy to say that we have come into full agreement. We signed a memorandum of agreement last month and they will be providing transportation and a reduced tuition rate of $200 per course and our students will be taking two courses per semester and by the end of the year, they'll have four and this will basically cost them $400 per semester for a three, two, three credit courses and transportation to and from Wareham and to Bridgewater State College.
That's incredible. So looking for questions?
Open for questions.
Okay, great. I definitely want to hear from you, Nicole, on this one.
Huh?
Yeah. Do you want to start?
No, no.
Yeah, I thought you'd start with Mike.
Yeah, I know. I'll start.
I just, I just wanted to be clear on what was changing, like we do this now.
So the only thing changing is that we took the transportation piece or the issue with transportation out of the equation. That's the only thing that changed. We've had dual enrollment for years, kids would drive themselves, they'd drive themselves back, but as Debbie alluded to, a lot of students don't have reliable transportation and a lot of students don't have the gas money nowadays, to be quite frank. The issue probably is more about the gas money. So we've taken those two things out of the equation and we hope to attract more students that may want to be involved in this program.
And the superintendent has vetted that through transportation and you're all set with that?
Actually, I'm really happy to announce that we put this out to bid to, to three transportation companies and our transportation company was the lowest, so I'm really happy with that as well and I want to thank Mr. Tatro and he knew we were putting it out to bid and they were the lowest, so it's, it's really an exciting partnership all the way around.
I'm happy too, but I'm not surprised. I mean, that's just, every time this, this happens, we come in the lowest. Was it by much?
It was by a landslide.
Oh, wow.
It was a significant amount.
So, so obviously, yeah, that's been all vetted and you're on board. Right? No, it sounds great. I can't say enough about this sort of thing. I mean, it's already been in place, but now it's more accessible.
Exactly.
You don't have to.
I definitely agree that transportation is probably the biggest issue with the amount of people that do dual enrollment, well, the amount of people that don't do dual enrollment because I personally know people who have said to me, oh my gosh, I wish I could do it, but I just can't afford to drive there. I can't, my parents work, they can't drive me there. So this will definitely encourage more people to take that challenge and go with it and, you know, lead them to open doors to their future that they wouldn't have had. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The, the kids, the students that are a mile and a half away from Bridgewater, will they be forced to walk? Seriously.
Only as the crow flies.
What is, what is the, the save, well, naturally the savings is on gas and wear and tear on the vehicles, but also can you be a little more specific on the reduction in tuition? What was the total savings on that?
I had a feeling that wasn't going to be a question and I researched that for you.
Except for we thought Mr. Swett was going to ask that question.
I beat him to it.
For a three-credit course, the cost is, well, it's actually $231.80 per credit, so that's about $700 per course. This, the course is going to cost them 200 and that's with transportation. So the, the only additional cost to them would be their, for their books. So it's substantial.
Very good. Thank you.
Is the whole Course of Studies open up to questions at this point?
If we can, just because I'm going to bring down the department heads, if we can keep it just to this at this point, if that's okay.
Then I have one simple question. Does this free transportation only apply to Bridgewater State?
Yes.
At this point, correct.
At this point, yeah.
But it doesn't shut out the other schools? Students can still do dual enrollment through the other schools?
No, I understand, but, but if they want to go to the other schools, at this point at least, Bridgewater State is setting the precedent and hopefully the others will follow.
I think as we get this rolling, that, that will happen.
I think Bridgewater State's being really smart. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to publicly thank Richie Coyle, who is a Wareham High School grad who helped us, helped to facilitate this process with Dr. Mullifaria.
I would like to add that on March 13th, we will be having a parent presentation about this and students will be notified as, as well as their parents. There will be an AP and dual enrollment informational night for parents.
For the 200 per course, for students that might have some financial issues with even making that, but there's desire and also the grades, are we providing them at least with information on fundraising activities or something where they might be able to fundraise to be able to come up with the course fees or financial aid?
We have never, for anything, ever turned down a student, whether it be DECA competition, senior class trip, this, any type of dual enrollment. If the, if the financial piece is an issue, we work on fundraising, payment plans, we will make sure that's not a deterrent.
Great. I just think it's important to say that over and over again so people understand, you know, go for it, even if you feel like that you're not going to be able to afford it, go for it and the support system that is available at the high school will do everything possible to get you there.
We have, we have a lot of flexibility now with the, with the MOU, with Bridgewater State University. There's going to be a lot of flexibility on the finance, financial piece as well.
Great. That's important. Thank you. Any other questions on this portion of the program studies? Okay?
Okay, I'm going to move on to.
Thank you, Mrs. Freitas.
You're welcome.
I'm going to move on to page seven and on page seven, we have the credits as we matriculate from year to year, obviously we have to add in the incoming classes and it's 130 credits, starting with the class of 2015 and beyond and you may remember, we made changes and increased the graduation requirements a few years back, so we are doing that as well for the future classes and we have made sure that we identified on the bottom of page seven, Applied Arts can count for an art credit, so that's on there as well. And moving on to page eight, it's something that we put in the packet every year, but we utilize the Mass Corps and we require the Mass Corps for our graduates and I know at one point in time, probably a few months ago, we presented the percentage of graduates that graduate with Mass Corps and that number should be as close to 100 with this graduating class as we have ever, as we have ever attained, so we're looking forward to being in the high 90s on the, on that Mass Corps and that is a requirement here at Wareham High School. Moving on to page nine, we'll go through all of these highlighted areas in the course description, but this just shows you all of the courses we offer and I know Kim did a great job the other day at the school committee meeting, talking about a lot of these electives and all these programs that we have and we're excited about the amount of opportunities our students have at Wareham High School and we've done a great job to maintain these programs and just tremendous. And just tremendous amount of electives, when you look at a school of 600 students, to have this many electives and this many opportunities, it's outstanding, so I certainly want to reiterate that. I will move on to page 11 and we just highlighted the MMSI and I know we've done a presentation on that, on that, I won't rehash that, but we've taken most of the prerequisites and lessened them to a point to encourage students to challenge themselves with the advanced placement courses and that grant has been tremendous for us. And I'll move on to our career and technology education program and ask Ms. Cindy Sylvia to come on up, please.
Why, she's doing that, from the pieces that Scott has just reviewed, are there any questions regarding those items? Okay.
And Cindy is the department head for career, culture, and wellness, and I got it right this time, and I'm going to turn it over to her to talk about some added courses and some changes in course descriptions.
Okay, it would be nice if he kept me up here for art and music all at once too, so we have to go back and forth.
She'll be coming back up a few times.
But we're going to talk about business first. The first thing that's exciting in our business program is that hospitality, sports and entertainment marketing, and entrepreneurship were all DECA courses that were not offered to ninth graders when they came in. So, we get them excited at the eighth grade level and then we get them here and they can't take anything. We've opened up all our electives outside of our chapter 74 program, which is Introduction to Business and the Marketing Program to nine through 12. So, it will give more flexibility in the schedule and it will give the kids opportunities to seek different avenues as far as getting involved with DECA or other clubs and activities. Also, within the business end of this department, we have the College Experience, which is a new course, which is going to be a course that gets 12th graders ready for what's going to happen in college. In essence, this is a freshman orientation class that most freshmen would see, same kinds of things, how do you, note-taking, study skills, preparation, and what to expect on a college campus. So, all the trial tribulations that they would face, all of the challenges and how to address them and how to be ready for them. And the only other change that is a little different is we piloted virtual business last year, it was a retailing course and it was a restaurant course. First semester was retailing, second semester was restaurant. After further review of that course, I thought it should be done in one semester and not two, so we've combined that course to call it Business Retailing. And the first quarter of the first semester will be retailing, the second quarter will be restaurant, and then we can offer it in the second semester as a dual package as well. So, those are some of the changes in the Career Technology Education Program.
Great, thank you. Questions from the committee?
Also, also just one other thing that we put in the course of studies that I don't know if it was there last year, because I'm not very well aware of it, but we also have our articulation agreement with Cape Cod Community College, it's always been there, it's not new, but I think that it needed to be in the course of studies. So, the kids would understand that if they took Introduction to Business followed by 10 credits in marketing and management as seniors, they qualify for six credits at Cape Cod Community College. They do not have to be enrolled as a full-time student, they only have to take one course and they would be, they would have access to those six credits.
Great.
Again, that's not new.
Questions?
Thanks for hanging out tonight. It's exciting to look at this, like you said, this, you're offering, you're offering a lot, but to clarify, this is what's being offered, it's not necessarily what will be taught, right? If things are undersubscribed, you won't offer them.
Correct, it's a student-run process based on, in this particular department, based on interest, there is a business requirement, the students have to attain five credits, which is one full-year course, but you are correct, it's a student-run process and if it's under-enrolled, obviously, we won't offer it. These are courses we can offer and every one of these courses that we'll go through tonight will not be offered.
Got you.
If you'd like, can I just-
Please.
For this year, we offered Accounting I, we had computer application, software solutions, school-to-career, two sections, we had childcare, we had virtual business, we had woodworking technology, 1, 2, 3, 4, we had, we had sports and entertainment marketing, business principles, we had management, we ran marketing, and so I would say probably 80% of the courses that you see in this department ran last year or this year.
So, you had woodworking, 1, 2, 3, 4?
Correct.
But did you, the previous year?
Every year we've run.
Every year.
I thought we lost woodworking.
No.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, kids who make it to woodworking 4 have badges of honor and they call WV, which is Woodworking Veteran.
And they wear them.
And they wear them proud every single day. Some of the stuff is amazing in there, if you ever get a chance to go in and see what's being done in the wood shop, it's absolutely a great job John Blackington does in there.
Thank you.
Any questions regarding this piece of the course of studies? Yes?
First of all, after, I felt this before, but after the DECA presentation two weeks ago or something like that, please take the comment I'm about to make in the context of, I think you do a fantastic job of creating confident, articulate, and what appears to be students of high personal discipline and character. So, when I look at a course called College Experience, I think gut, that's a college term, meaning really easy course, and lacking rigor, and why would kids who you've developed so beautifully for three years need a course like this?
Not, first of all, not all 12th graders take DECA, so there are some kids who are going to be in need of a course that may not be able to experience DECA through our, through our course of studies. And there are some kids who are unsure if they're even going to go to college and this course could be a course for them to see if they have the confidence that is deep inside them to go to college. And a course like this might not be for who you see come up here and present to the school committee, it could be for that kid that's really on the borderline of, am I going to go to college? And that course might be for that kid to say, "Yeah, I can do it, I took that course, I understand what it is and I think I can do it and I think I'm ready to do it." So, I think that we have to have a diverse amount of courses for these kids of all different levels and all different abilities and all different confidence levels. And sometimes, the right course for the right kid makes all the difference. And sometimes, DECA is not the right course for the right kid, maybe this course is going to be the right course for the right student so that they have the opportunities that everybody else is going to have.
And to piggyback on that, think of the kid that she just described and now that kid has five college, I'm sorry, three college credits to his or her name, because this is-
An articulated course.
This is an articulated course with Massasoia, I'm sorry, yeah, Massasoia Community College.
It's their curriculum.
I'm skeptical and that's, take that as a compliment, because I think you and the great teachers that are behind you do a great job of instilling confidence, but I'm still a little skeptical that it will be worth the effort, but I-
Well, it's a pilot course, we'll reevaluate it after you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on?
You good?
Yeah.
Okay, thank, she'll be back up.
Yeah, I'm not saying goodbye.
I'd like to bring up Mike Murray, English and History Department Head, to talk about the changes in English.
Welcome.
There are actually changes in the social studies, we were adding Intro to Economics for a course, oh geez, let's talk about English, sorry. The main change is that we've added the articulation agreement with Bristol Community College for our Journalism course, students can take the class for five credits, they take the full year and score a B minus or better at BCC. And we're also planning to offer Yearbook Construction and Design, which in the past has been both a club and an independent study, the logistics to make that happen were kind of difficult and complex. And we have a lot of students who are very interested in this project-based technologically, technological-centric course to take, so I think there'll be a lot of interest and so we're going to offer that as a populated course, a semester course that students could take for 2.5 credits. Actually, there'll be two sections, so they could take it the full year as well for five credits.
Are those all the changes?
Those are the changes in English.
Okay. Questions?
Just, thank you for more economics, the more the better.
Yes, thank Mr. St. Julia for that, we'll get to that when we get to social studies.
Yes.
We're all set?
All set. Okay, and we're going to bring back Cindy Sylvia again for the Fine Arts and we've got some-
Why aren't you just doing them right in a row? Just for fun?
Exercise.
Just to keep them moving. Before, we had department heads for every department and so we've consolidated, so we'll work on that for next year, consolidating the time that they're up here. But we do have the Fine Arts, some changes in course descriptions, and I'll turn it over to Cindy Sylvia again.
A few of the ones you see highlighted, like Art I is just a description change, just to update it, to reevaluate it, and to make it more current. Some significant changes, a little bit more, is Discovery in Art, which is going to be a 21st century art history class, and it's going to identify different pieces in history and how they relate to today's world. So, that should be an interesting course as we have a lot of interest in kids in our, in our school, we have a great department. The other thing is Graphic Design I and II, otherwise known as Photoshop in past years. Sitting down with some of the members of that discipline in my department, we felt like just isolating ourselves as far as graphic design goes into one software program was not helpful to our kids when there are so many other software programs out there that the kids attach to. So, if they're trying to do graphic design and they come in and they're asking them to strictly use Photoshop, well, that isn't giving them a whole gamut of what graphic design truly is. So, it gives them a little bit more autonomy about what programs they're going to use to create their designs. So, we're excited about that. And that's it for art, I think, because ceramics is just a course change, ah, course description change.
Questions regarding art?
So, let's, let's say someone does want to use Photoshop, does the school provide that?
Yes, they do.
That license?
Yes, they do.
On the student's computer?
The ones they use in the classroom, yes.
Oh, so it wouldn't be on their personal computer?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Yep, they hold the license for the labs, but they do not have personal licenses. Some of the kids have it on their own.
So, you have Photoshop now-
Yes.
Licensed in-house?
Yes.
You'd have to buy new licenses for the, whatever else the students would want.
No, that would be if they wanted to bring in their, their own device and they wanted to run their own graphic design, or they're going to give some other freeware that uses graphic design too.
Okay.
Photoshop will still be an option, we've not excluded it, we've just made it inclusive to other software programs that the kids might be more well-versed with.
Offhand, do you know what a license for Photoshop goes for?
I have absolutely no idea.
I believe it's around $70 per license.
Is that the full-blown version?
I believe so.
That must be the student rate.
Oh, it's definitely right.
It's like 600 bucks, so anyway, that's great to hear.
Want to take the course?
I do, actually, I want to so bad.
Okay, if we're, are we ready to move on? Okay, Cindy is the music department head as well, so turn it over to Cindy again.
Okay, we have a phenomenal music teacher in Heather Ware and she's really starting to revolutionize the music department in giving us some of the things that our kids really have demanded. If you've seen any of our plays, the kids are really into drama, so one of the new courses that the students are very, very excited about is Introduction to Musical Theater. It's probably the closest we've ever been to having a drama class, so the kids are very excited about that and, you know, I really just hope that we can generate some interest because Ms. Ware is working and she would like to have a collaboration with the middle school and have some, some vertical alignment about getting the kids excited about music in a time where it, it needs some rejuvenation. The kids need to be excited about music and I think this might be a way to bring them into that as they're already drama-driven, some of them. Also, music theory, she's amazing when it comes to writing music and delivering that, so she's going to bring her expertise to that and, as well as fundamentals in music. So, those are some of the new courses that we're going to be offering, a lot of it based on her expertise.
Great. Questions from the committee? The one question that I have, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I'm fortunate enough to be on the board of the New Bedford Symphony and if Ms. Ware has any, is, if she wants anything as it relates to what a symphony orchestra could do for her, please tell her to contact me and I'll do everything I can to get it for her.
I absolutely will. She would enjoy that.
No, and it piggybacks on the, the question that I had, which was, we have local theater troops in Wareham as well as just in our surrounding area, an amazing one right near Highfield Hall and Falmouth, so I just wanted to know if there are any, if there's been any outreach or any partnership with some of the shows that are going on locally.
I'm not really sure, because the drama department is run by Dawn Bliss, which is not really music, but she, she helps with him quite a bit, so I think that as we move forward, she is not a stranger to community outreach, so I think that those will different, definitely be avenues that she'll explore.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything else? Okay.
Okay, we're going to move on to, you're not off yet? Foreign language.
I'm still on foreign language.
She's trying to escape here, but foreign language, I think you'll go through it pretty quickly, but there's minimal changes there.
There's, the major change is the prerequisite from the middle school to the high school as far as Spanish one and Spanish and French one. There used to be an MCAS requirement that was in the prerequisite, we didn't understand why the MCAS requirement was in the prerequisite. So, basically, you need to have a 90 in English and you need a recommendation from your foreign language teacher, that's all we've changed. We took out that you had to have a certain score on the MCAS.
Okay. Questions from the committee? All right, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to bring up Katie Marchesault, Math and Science Department Head, to go over some changes in math. And I do apologize when we were formatting this and I think when we sent it electronically, it kicked out the pre-calculus class, so that's why I wanted to make sure you had a fresh copy.
Thank you.
We did not eliminate that course. So, we did add, we made some changes to Algebra I honors to accommodate the incoming eighth graders that may be taking that course for the prerequisite. We added a new course called Advanced Mathematical Decision Making. This is a course that has been developed by the Dana Center at the University of Texas A&amp;M and it is supported by the Massachusetts Department of Education, I'm sorry, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, so that's one of the additions. One of the deletions was Personal Financial Literacy, which I think is probably somewhat odd, given that I was just up here for the Credit for Life Fair, so that is a deletion. And college math, one of the big changes was SAT prep is now required for all juniors. College math had a significant amount of SAT prep embedded in the course, so that's been removed and we have plenty of advanced algebra to fill the course with. So, those are the changes in mathematics.
Great. Questions? Yes?
I love, repeat, love, the new course on Advanced Mathematical Decision Making, especially given that that's apparently going to be the emphasis on the PARK assessment, meaning critical thinking, decision-making, so I applaud that you're bringing it in. You said something else about a course and now I've-
Personal Financial Literacy?
No, it wasn't that. It'll come, it'll come back to me, that's all right. But before I forget, I just wanted to say it's after 9 o'clock and the five of you are here and I don't take that for granted, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything on math? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. You may want to stick around, I don't think, Phys Ed has, Phys Ed and Health, there are no changes, certainly, I'll bring Cindy back up if you want me to, but-
Please, yes, no, 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 it's your call.
If, if there are questions, I'll bring her back up, otherwise I'll-
Is there any question? Are there any questions? Okay.
All right, then I'll, I'll have Katie stay and move on to science, Katie also wears the hat of Science Department Head, so I'll have her talk about some of the changes, course description changes as well.
So, one of the additions was the Introduction to the Physical World in Honors section of that, something that I think science and guidance have wanted for quite some time, that's again to accommodate our eighth grade dual enrollment program, but will be a great addition. The other addition is the Intro to Astronomy course, so this is a great elective, we've already had a lot of buzz for it, I can't wait to see how much interest there is in the course. I've had students approach the teacher who has been developing the course and they're not even his students, so I can't wait to see what that has for interest.
Okay, questions on this piece and then I'll come back to you on the other one. Okay. Different member of this question?
My question was, what's the status of getting juniors access to Accuplacer?
Part of the college course with Massa Soyit is going to actually allow us to have an Accuplacer license. And at that point in time, once we're a licensed facility, we have free rein. So that would be a conversation we would definitely be having, I would imagine, over the summer as we, as we get together with Massa Soyit. As long as we have the interest from the students, we will be a licensed site.
If, yeah, I, if they understand what's involved in taking a, a course that get no, they get no credit for and they have to pay for, they'll want to be familiar with Accuplacer.
And Accuplacer, as you are aware, it's, there is going to be, there are going to be some changes in regards to Accuplacer down the road. So hopefully, we have it in place for a few years before they make those changes.
Yeah, I just don't want, I'm tired of our students being blindsided. And I have a telescope if you'd like one.
We always accept donations. As a matter of fact, we had one donated very recently. You'll probably be, I hope you'll be approving it at the next meeting.
There was a piece of a telescope.
Piece of a telescope. A big piece, though. All right, I'm going to bring up Mr. Michael Mari one more time for the social studies. We do have some changes, as Mr. Swett alluded to, with the economics, and also a course description change.
All right, so we would like to offer Intro to Economics. Currently, we do have AP Economics, but it serves a, a limited number of students, seniors. So the intro could provide more students with the opportunity to engage in the subject and hopefully encourage more to take the AP course as well. We also, I guess anecdotally, a lot of students do choose business colleges. And National Department of Ed reports, I think it's almost one-third of the BAs awarded in the past several years have been business degrees. It hurts me to say that as the English department guy, but hey, I guess some people want to work. So anyway, and it, it also feels good to, to have an Intro to Economics. And the other thing is the psychology. Teacher wanted to rewrite the course description to reflect the course that she's been teaching more, more effectively.
Questions on the changes to the social studies program?
If I can also just mention that the JROTC program is part of the, the history department as well, and I know that's the last page on the course of studies.
Okay. Overall, yes, I was going to ask.
So I don't have a question. I have more of a, a comment. But I just want to say that I am so glad that I go to Wareham High School because my favorite part of my school is that there's so much diversity because with everything that we offer, you, you pick a student and there, one student could be, they could be DECA. They could have, you know, everyone is an individual in my school because there's so many options. There, everyone is different. It's, it's incredible. I just can't stress that enough. So I want to thank everyone for, who's responsible for this, for offering this many courses because it's just, I don't even have the words to describe how great it is to have this many opportunities at my, in my hands, you know? It's great. So thank you.
Thank you.
We're happy to have you at Wareham High School, too.
Set it perfectly. Are there any courses that you saw that are new in that list that you think that you're going to go for next year?
Well, I can't take Intro to Economics, but I might take the AP course. Other than that, I'm not really a business-y person, so maybe astronomy will be my thing. I don't know.
All right.
We'll see.
Great. I just wanted to, the same thing that, you know, other members have said here, just thank all the departments that are here tonight. I mean, this, this work that you do to be able to review and go over and know the students and understand really what's missing and what needs to happen next. You're constantly doing the work to be able to catch up with the students and what their needs are in our, in our district. And so, again, I just want to thank everyone that had a hand in this and, and all the work that you do.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments from?
Just real quick, I, I know you keep abreast of the, the area, the other area, high schools and stuff. And for two thousand fourteen, for next year, two thousand fifteen, one hundred and thirty credits, right? What's a school, what does Bourne offer? What does Sandwich offer? What does ORR offer for that year?
So I, I had someone ask me that question via email, and although I don't have it in front of me, I, I remember that we had the highest number of credits of any of the schools in the area, and I believe Sandwich was the closest to us. I believe O-Rochester was a hundred and twenty, and I believe Bourne was the same. I believe they were both a hundred and twenty, and you can see that, you can go on their websites and get it as well. And I believe it was Sandwich was the closest to us. And I, I can't remember if it was one, if they were at one twenty or one twenty-five. Maybe, I think it was one twenty-five, Sandwich. But I'd certainly be happy to go back and check that email.
And, and these are hard requirements. I mean, you, you will...
These are mass core requirements.
Yeah, you will, you will make these requirements before you graduate.
Correct.
You know, just, just, I mean, it speaks to the rigor and, and another reason to stay at Wareham High School.
We're excited about the transcripts that are leaving the guidance office as we speak because with the new schedule, obviously, and I know we've, we've talked about that, teachers stepping up and teaching an extra class, these transcripts are solid. They're to the point where some of the transcripts are going on to a second page, which is unheard of in the twenty years that I've been here. It's very rare that you have a transcript go on to a second page. And so that's basically, they're filling up those four years with sometimes a hundred and forty, somewhere a hundred and fifty credits.
Do, do you ever hear any feedback from colleges that, that students apply to to be like, you know, you know, this is impressive. How do you do it?
I have an admissions counselor on, on my, on my school council, and he's, we've had quite a few opportunities to talk about the transcripts and the strength of the transcripts. And they're, obviously, you know, in that, in the conversation, and he's not getting maybe the ones that we're talking about. He's at a community, local community college. But we have admissions reps that come in in the fall almost every single day. And certainly, we've had some conversations, probably not as many as we'd like to. But they're, I'll tell you what, they're knocking down our doors to get our kids into their schools, so it's, it's exciting. I know that's their job, but this year, we, we really had to be cautious with the people coming in and, because they want to meet with our students and obviously want to have them apply. But I don't think the, you know, a hundred and thirty credit requirement is hurting us, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Please, Cindy.
I just wanted to say, one of the reasons that we're able to offer the hundred and thirty credit requirement also is because our kids aren't in study halls. So they're taking six courses. If they, if we were in our old schedule, they had five periods...
Eight courses.
Eight, eight courses, rather. If we were in our old schedule where they weren't able to take as many courses, they couldn't graduate with as many credits. So the fact that they have the opportunity to take eight classes per, per year changes the game.
And I remember that that comes up quite a bit, and I remember that was at peril, like last year, I think, where we had the cuts and such, and you were able to keep that. Let's hope we can still keep it.
I think that you'd probably have to look at the requirements if we went back to study halls because they wouldn't be able to fit them in a day.
I'm, I'm taking the positive approach. I'm adamant we're going to be offering as many of these courses as we can.
I get it. Yes?
I can't help but offer a quick anecdote. Two young women, both going to UMass Dartmouth, both biology majors, both taking the same, just finished the same chemistry course, both complained about a lack of rigor at their high school chemistry class. One complaining vehemently because she got a D, and the other person in the same course got a B. The person that got the B came out of Wareham High School.
And imagine that person having the AP chemistry course.
Oh, I'm sorry. The person that got the D came out of ORR.
Appreciate that. Imagine now with the AP chemistry course...
Okay, I admit I'm biased. I'm sorry.
And now we have the AP chemistry course that that student unfortunately missed out on, but now our students have that opportunity as well. So that B will probably translate into an A next year for a graduate from Wareham High School.
And the, the other anecdote, last year, we had Cindy Pham, the student rep, and she was saying that when she was doing the dual enrollment, that the courses at high school were much more rigorous than what she was doing there at, at Bridgewater.
We had a few kids that came back. I know a few of the reporters were there when the seniors came back, and a few of the students alluded to that. Specifically, I believe they cited some of the English courses and the business courses were more difficult at Wareham High School than they were at these four-year institutions they were at.
Look at that. Kids go to college easier. That should be the slogan. Is there anything else?
Just, just a comment. You're not a Level One school. You're a Number One school when you do things like this. And, and I hope everyone follows that, what's going on in the high school. And as our student rep said, she's so excited with all of these courses. I wish there was offerings like this when I graduated ten years ago, but keep up the good work.
And we're blessed to have, obviously, you see what we have in front of us, great department heads. And you go back in the school, we've got great staff and great students. We're, I'm blessed to be the principal. I say it every day. If I didn't have to handle the business piece, I'd be loving life even more.
But I mean, it's just the, the dedication when you start talking about your staff and, and the multiple hats that they're wearing and still being able to focus on each position that they're doing is absolutely a tribute, and it starts from the top.
Thank you.
Is there anything else on the program studies? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the changes that were presented to us this evening.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Again, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is the financial reports.
Can we skip this?
Yeah, I know.
It's done good.
No, 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 he needs, it is cold in here, and a little birdie told me that that could be your fault.
Money we're saving.
Saving money. We're all, our teeth are chattering. And I thought that maybe it would speed up the meeting, but it hasn't.
I can take no credit for it.
Yeah.
Hey, so thank you very much, school committee. I thought, there's a slight change from before. I'd start by just with a few highlights. And, you know, as part of the financial report, a few highlights of some of the work we've been doing this month. As well as, you'll be aware, we've been working on the FY15 budget, working with the superintendent administrators and the town administrator on developing alternatives to our requested budget that we've already presented to the town. And that might be, I can believe the superintendent's going to raise that under her updates. We've also tracking and controlling expenditure in our FY14 budget, and that will be something I'll go into more detail in my function summary. And at the same time, we're still, believe it or not, we're finishing out FY13 end-of-year audit. So we've got these three years still up in there. And also, we are working on improving our internal processes. And I just wanted to give you a couple, a few highlights of that. I've just secured a small grant for software for a work order system and preventative management program to help us manage our facilities and repairs. We're working on improving the interaction of the various databases that we rely on throughout the district for our data to improve efficiency and the accuracy of our data. And also importantly, this is an issue that's come up at the school committee in the past, we are arranging for some small focused audits of key financial processes in the district. So which the outcome, you know, which bringing accountants in to look at some of these key processes. And the outcome of these will be to identify key areas of risk, but also opportunities for us to improve our processes. I'm planning to start this process hopefully in early March with the, looking at our payroll process. And I, along with that, we're also, and just started the process in, partly in response to some questions we've had of reviewing our chart of accounts to identify any areas where we need to make changes to improve the recording and presentation of our financial information. And the first, one of the first steps of that was, eh, some changes I made to the financial report that we circulated this month, as I've tried to include some of the definitions of the functions which we report on, which is my segue into that financial report unless there's any questions on these highlights I presented.
So the updates and highlights that Michael presented, is there any questions on any of those? Okay. Yes?
The revised, the report itself or just the update?
No, 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 just the updates. Going to go through the report. So you're just going to basically highlight any key changes, but...
Yeah, exactly. So we, you know, overall, the picture is very similar to where we were as I presented at our la, at the last meeting, as we were at the end of December. You know, I just stress, as has come up in the past, that this budget is very tight this year in light of some of the challenges we've faced since the beginning of the year. And, you know, and so we are really being very tight on our budget and restricting all discretionary spend. And, you know, as one reflection of that, you'll see the instructional materials, for example. We have spent less as a proportion of that so far than we had in the past. And, you know, that's a credit to the principals who I know are working hard to make every dollar count and stretch all our materials as far as they'll go. Eh, there are a couple of areas that highlight, eh, one good thing is heating, our expenditure on heating is down from last year. And, you know...
I wonder why?
Yeah, yeah. So eh, and eh, so that's an improvement as well. And I know this came up at our last meeting, so I just wanted to mention substitutes. So although we have spent more on professional development substitutes since our last report, overall, the substitute line is down on last year and with the net effect of the reduction of about ten thousand dollars. So it's not a lot yet, but it is a step in the right direction. And eh, we are working hard to reduce expenditure on professional development substitutes as well. And superintendent and I are eh, have, you know, sent that message to principals and directors so that we're reducing any time that teachers are out of the classroom. Finally, just the last thing, I was asked about the last meeting, was the other student body activities function. So I could just let you know that now that that, this includes field trips at high school and at Minnetonka and we, as well as the school store, a program scheme at West Wareham Academy. Just the last thing I'll say is, so I did change the format of the, you know, and I, you know, I just sent it out without getting any feedback first, so if you do have any comments or changes you'd like to see or information you'd like added, just let me know, you know, I'll continue to tinker at this to improve how we present our information.
Great. Mike?
Just, I mean, it's, it's easier to read, you know, probably for the public, the way you've done it this way, and that's great. But I do think that it's important to somehow put the, the code there, you know, under the, the name.
Sure.
You know, so that, that we can look at it, because that's important for us, you know, to look at the policy and such, you know?
Yeah, no problem.
Do you have anything else?
No.
Okay.
Just a quick question. Should we at all be concerned with the, the athletics account? Which shows significantly less remaining than prior years?
So yeah, I have been, I've spoken to the principal of the high school about athletics generally, but not about that in particular, about, you know, about how we ensure the budget is met. And we're reviewing, you know, cost of transport and so on to try and make sure that the budget is managed within the district. So it's too early to say if we should be too concerned about it, but we do, I am aware of it, and we're looking at what steps we can do to help reduce the overall budget, the overall costs.
But there's, there's nothing, but, nothing in particular that's causing it?
Not that I'm aware of at the moment, just the general athletics program.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
The report does keep getting better. Thank you.
Okay, so the revolving accounts, I know that you just presented on this, so are there any significant changes?
No significant changes. Eh, you know, the only thing I was going to point out is, as the, the, the general budget is so tight, we'll be trying, making these revolving accounts work hard for us and using all these accounts where, you know, where possible while staying within the restrictions of these accounts. But no specific highlights.
Okay. Any questions on the revolving account report that we received? Yes?
Not, not a question, but I just wanted to throw this out there to the public, to the people that are here today and people that are watching. It's all about the transparency, and, and everything that we're discussing right now is, is on the website. The meeting packet is on the website. You can look at it. Probably goes up, what, Fridays, before the meeting? If you have questions to discuss citizens' participation, you can do so. You can reference the same materials that we're reading right here. You go onto the website, it's warehamps.org, and you go onto the departments, and you go onto the school committee, and then it's a meeting packet or agenda packet or something like that. And it's pretty much what we have right here.
Yes?
There's a, under payments to date for transportation, it's a negative number, twelve thousand. There's a, under payments to date for transportation, it's a negative number, 12,000 negative.
It's because of the way that transfers between, the, between the different, internally in the district are reflected in the accounts. So, yeah. I'm surprised.
No big deal.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Good job.
Next presentation, can you bring blankets? It'd be great.
Small charge.
That's what I like to hear.
Okay. Superintendent, the 14 budget reduction request from town.
Earlier this month, we'd received a request from our town manager asking the school to provide $250,000 worth of cuts in the FY14 budget. This is due to the Department of Revenue has requested the town to reduce its budget by 500,000 and the town has announced what their $250,000 worth of reductions are. To this date, the school department has not, we've shared that we've frozen our budget, we've maintained and monitored our spending, we have reduced positions from the paraprofessionals by four, we reduced food service by two positions or three employees, we also will be freezing any transportation purchasing and that will, if we are requested of the $250, we have, oh yeah, $250,000, we have met that obligation. At this point, the money remains with us and will remain with us throughout the rest of the school year.
And again, just to be clear, the request for the $250,000 is coming out of our current fiscal year and the town is doing the same, but the money will stay here until it is requested be transferred over. Comments or questions from the committee? Okay. School, your report?
I would like to share that the principal search application has closed, we received 24 applications. The director of curriculum has closed, we've received 40 applications. We will begin, the principal's search has begun, the committee is formed and you should be contacted if you're on the committee to begin reviewing the applications. The director of curriculum committee will begin in the next week or so and we will be contacting the various parties who volunteered to be on the committee and we will open up applications for the review. I believe last night at the board of selectmen, there was a question about the $400,000 from FY13 budget that was brought up. I would invite any parties that have questions about our FY13 budget, I would be very happy to have a conversation, please contact me, and I would, I would be very happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
That was regarding the FY14 budget?
That was from FY13 budget.
Oh, 13.
The $400,000 was from the FY13 budget.
Correct, yes.
Right.
Questions or comments? Do you have anything else for the superintendent?
I do.
Okay.
I'm not finished. All right, we have three articles for your approval that we will be moving to town meeting. Article number one would resend the town article for purchase of school buses. This action needs to be taken because the vote was taken prior to the money being placed into the account, therefore, DOR would not allow it. Article two would return Everett Educational Center to the town control. And article number three would ask if the town would appropriate or borrow money for the proposed roof project at the Wareham High School. The proposed amount of money that would be borrowed would be $2,365,986. We are eligible for a 68% reimbursement from MSBA. So I would ask the committee to please move these articles forward for town, for town meeting.
I'll take a motion to approve the articles which will go in front of town meeting.
Can we do each one at a time?
Sure.
The first one would be the school buses.
I move for discussion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
For discussion? Okay?
I understand, I understand why it needs to be rescinded. What I don't understand is why we're not putting another one to encumber some funds that we do have to buy some buses when that time comes.
If I can just answer that, so, as part of our agreement with the town to reduce our, as part of our agreement with the town to reduce our expenditure for FY2014, we agreed not to spend that money in the transportation revolving account. And my understanding is that under the Department of Revenue rules, as soon as you have an article passed at a town meeting, that is considered expenditure. So that's why we can't have it, can't have the article at this coming town meeting, but our plan and our hope would be to have it at the next town meeting in the fall.
So, so the best case scenario is, I mean, the DOR is making us do this because they're not comfortable with, you know, our, our numbers, they want it reduced by $500,000 just because they're not comfortable with our projections, you know, the town's projections. I mean, that, that could all play out perfectly well and there'd be no reduction at all, but yet, best case scenario, we won't be able to encumber money until October.
Exactly, yes.
And when was the last time we actually bought a bus, new, used, or otherwise?
Last school year.
Yeah, last school year. I mean, we've made such great strides in, in the safety reports and everything, I don't wanna, I mean, we can't do anything, I, I'm just thinking out loud here, you know, but I don't wanna lose the progress we've made on the busing, just thinking out loud.
Yes?
First of all, there are two blanks on the article, I'd like to give you the information to fill them in, because if we're gonna vote on the article, it'd be, I think it'd be a good idea to not have blanks. It's article 19 from a year ago and it's April 22, 2013. Secondly, I share Mr. Flaherty's feelings about this situation. I don't want to make enemies at the Department of Revenue, but they don't have the responsibility to run this town or certainly specifically the Transportation Department, and I get, I get the feeling that because they have some concerns about the revenue projections of our town administrator, that all of a sudden, they think they can order this town around and, and impact specifically the Transportation Department. And thirdly, as we can see, when we keep our fleet reasonably modern, and I emphasize the word reasonably modern, our maintenance costs drop significantly and we save money. So, I, I think this whole situation is, for a euphemism of the evening, unfortunate.
So we have a motion and a second, but we made changes to it, so I'd like to ask that we-
Amended?
Yes, but I think you have to pull it back first, so.
I withdraw my second.
I withdraw my, my motion.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve the article regarding the rescinding of the purchase of school buses as amended.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, 4-0-0. The next article is the article to return Everett Educational Center to town control. Just to clarify, the Everett Educational Center was the building that was used to house the sped department as well as the director of curriculum. Both of those have moved over to where the superintendent now is, and that is the reason why we're turning it back to the town. I will take a motion to approve.
So moved for discussion.
Second?
Yes.
Again, I understand why this article is there, it's sorely needed. We don't, we're never gonna use the building again, I don't know what the town will do with it, but I, I wonder at this time if it's appropriate to perhaps put out, put any building that the town, any building that is under the school's care and custody that doesn't have a principal in it, i.e. the Hammond.
We've had that discussion and we were advised by the town council that until we, at this point, we would bring it forward in the fall. We would bring it forward in the fall, we would also bring East forward in the fall town meeting as we still are occupying the building.
So-
Not Hammond, but we still have possessions in Hammond.
Okay, is beyond school time there?
We do have one person that is relocating to a different area.
Okay, so, so expect at next town meeting in October to have an article for Hammond and East?
That would be correct.
To give it back to the town?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, 4-0-0. Last article is the, to see if the town will transfer or borrow the amount of $2,365,986 for the purposes of replacing the roof at the high school. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? One point, this is to follow up to the article at last town meeting where we borrowed for feasibility study. At that point, the feasibility study was then to move us into this phase, which is to, to borrow the full amount for the roof. Yes?
Sorry, that's not my recollection. My recollection is the school, school district funded the feasibility study.
Correct, out of the LEA budget.
Sorry, I think I, I tried to wipe that out of my head, but-
I understand why you would want to wipe that out.
No, that's a good point to clarify, yes.
And secondly, I would point out that we're talking a pretty big number here, 2.3 something million dollars. For those people who are listening and hear, and hear, and present in the room, what this means is that 68% reimbursement, that the town is really on the hook for $757,000.
Which would be-
Our portion of the 2.3.
Yes.
And it's a PVC roof with a 25-year warranty.
Right. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, 4-0-0.
Okay, thank you. We continue to work on the FY15 budget. I've been meeting at the elementaries, going through the elementary proposal, I have one meeting left in the 25th of February, February. I will be at Deccus, I invite any community, any teachers, any faculty, or any students who would have questions about our proposed reconfiguration to please come out and ask questions. Also, on the website, there's an area that you can send a question directly to me and I would be very happy to answer any questions I receive. The FY15 budget, we continue to develop it and we will be bringing forward proposals for further reductions at the next committee meeting.
Any questions on the superintendent's report? Okay, are there any school committee reports? Any, yes?
Very quickly, I, there was a joint Cape Cod collaborative Division VII of MASC legislative update, took place last Friday. It was attended by school committee members and superintendents and it consisted of a presentation by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education regarding Common Core and the Park Assessment. It looks like the class of 2018 will be the first class to be officially taking park. That means-
Does that make you happy?
And even then, there will be a pencil and paper option. It's a, it was a complicated presentation, I think it was actually pretty well done, I think people benefited from it, our superintendent was there, we also had a number of legislators there as well as candidates for governor. I think it was an interesting, interesting morning and we did learn that we have lots of support for our legislators, but their checkbooks are a little thin. I think that'll do.
Great, great. Any other reports, school committee reports? Okay, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
No.
Hold on, what? Oh, sorry, any other business?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know if we can make it a priority, or ask the superintendent to make it a priority to continue to be engaged with Acting Chief Walsh and Derek Sullivan, because I think every day that goes by without a resource officer in the school is, is not a good situation. And right now, the thing is dial 911. If I was a parent in Fairhaven or Dartmouth or anywhere considering moving to Wareham and I started Googling and every time I Google something, I see police dispatch to the school, why would I want to move here? So I, I think it's a priority, I hope that we're not set saying that we, we understand it's cut for, for the rest of this year. We're talking February to June, that's a long time, that's a lot of school days and the value of a resource officer is exactly that title, resource. And, and a lot of the things are able to be squashed, if you will, before they can become out there in the public. And that's not the job of the principals. The principals right now are trying to get the best academics for the schools and, and that's where the resource officer comes in and I'm sure, I'm not speaking for everyone here, but in an ideal world, we'd probably like to have a minimum of two. So I'd like, with your permission, Madam Chair, is that this becomes a high priority to continue in daily conversations, if necessary, and report back to the committee at our next meeting as to any progress on that topic.
Thank you.
I, I would ask not to just wait till the next meeting, but keep us updated as anything develops. Email would be fine. Yeah, you can't say it enough. It's one of those things, everybody, everybody nods their heads, everybody's in agreement, they all know how important it is, but we can't do anything about it, it seems, you know, but we gotta do something about it. You said it, you said it all, Ken.
Yes?
Lastly, I just, I just wanted to commend the superintendent, just, I've been reading the papers and, and just for being so visible in the community. I know you said you were going to be when you, when you came on board, but you, you're walking the walk and then some, literally, and, and so positive and people, you get, they have access to you firsthand and get the answers they want firsthand, if they want, if they choose to. If they don't, they don't, but you're there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, I apologize before, now I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Going outside to-
Thank you to those that hung in with us till the end.
Great job.